All right. I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, February 2nd, 2015. Actually, my son's 40th birthday. He and I are now the same age. Want to welcome everyone. Tonight, we have Reverend John Hurst of the Mount Zion Baptist Church at 2642 Hawthorne, who will come forward and give our invocation. And while he's coming up, today unexpectedly Deputy Chief Mike Brown, who had been with the city for, my goodness, almost 39 years. We believe that he had a heart attack and he passed away. Mike had been just a pillar of the police station, had acted as chief, and just a heck of a guy to his family and to the police department. I mean, they're all devastated. We don't know any of the details as far as when the funeral or the burial will be. Like I say, it happened this afternoon. They were at lunch, and he apparently had a heart attack. As a matter of fact, Mike was here two weeks ago. Just a very well-spoken, level-headed kind of police officer that you would want every police officer to be. He just went way too early. You know, Mike had had some kidney problems, had been on dialysis for a long time, I think maybe 12 years. I don't know how he did it, but he had this will to live, and we're going to miss him. And I know that that whole department, our community is saddened by that news. So, John, if you will, as we stand, if you'll remember him, John, in your invocation.
Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we come. Lord, before thee this evening with a bowed head and an armar heart, saddened in so many ways, dear God, by the loss of one from the midst of police who has served well. We pray, oh God, for his family at this hour that you would give them comfort in their hour bereavement. And then, God, we pray, giving you thanks for the blessing that you have given us, even in times such as these, we realize that we are still blessed. And we just ask, if you will, to look upon us tonight, return to mercy, and give our heart comfort. And bless this organization as they go about doing the business for this great city in which we live. We pray that you would not only bless this city, but bless this state in which we live, in this great country. Bless all of those who are in positions of leadership, elected and appointed. And Father, we just give you praise and honor, and you're already glorified. And we thank you for all that you've done and all that you're going to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen, and thank God.
Do you pledge now?
We pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of, well, we have one change on the agenda. Item G on the consent agenda will not be voted on. It'll be, we'll vote on everything but that. That's authorize a 5K fund run. We got some questions about that, so that will not be voted on tonight. I think that's the only other thing. Under the mayor's report, you know, I mean, this is a meeting that I look forward to because we got these folks, the spiritual heirs, they're going to come up after I get Ms. Bluestein to recognize Black History Month. And I know we got Lisa Castleberry and Betty Williams here. If y'all want to come forward, anybody else? Yes, yeah, Betty Williams, I'm sorry. If y'all want to come forward, and we'll, I'll get Ms. Bluestein to read the proclamation and give that to y'all. Y'all good right there. And then, we got these spiritual heirs, and Ms. Bluestein.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, we are so happy that you were able to come this evening. Now, I'd like to present a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Black History Month. Whereas each year during Black History Month, the city of Smyrna explores the history and culture of African-Americans, discovering stories of triumph of the human spirit. And whereas the theme for Black History Month for 2015 is a century of black life, history, and culture. She recognized the achievements and influences of African-Americans in the 20th and 21st century. And whereas, black scholars, artists, athletes, and leaders use their talents both to change the world and how the world viewed African-Americans. And whereas, in post-World War I America, black artists gave the world a cornucopia of cultural gifts, including jazz, poetry based on black vernacular, and appreciation of African art. And whereas, 2015 is the 55th anniversary of the death of influential writers Zora Neale Hurston, author of Their Eyes Were Watching God, whose works rendered new attitudes about narrative style and content; and Richard Wright, author of Black Boy and Native Son, whose works made an indelible mark on the social and intellectual history of the United States in the last half of the 20th century. And whereas, black athletes broke color barriers and excelled in team and individual sports, changing baseball, track and field, football, boxing, and basketball. And whereas, 2015 is the 65th anniversary of the integration of the NBA basketball, when Earl Lloyd took the floor for the Washington Capitals in Rochester, New York on October 31st, 1950. And whereas, in what, in a wave of social movements, African-American activism transformed race relations, challenged foreign policy, and became the American conscience on human rights. And whereas, 2015 is the 60th anniversary of the arrest of Rosa Parks in Alabama, precipitating the Montgomery Bus Boycott, which led to the integration of public transportation. And whereas, the contribution of African-Americans in the sciences, arts, sports, and social justices are vital advances, influencing not just American culture, but the lives and cultures of people around the world. Now, therefore, I, AMEX Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2015 to be Black History Month. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this second day of February in the year of the Lord, 2015.
Anything y'all want to say, Lisa or Betty? Before I think Mr. Welsh.
I just want to tell everybody here that I was in the library this afternoon right before I came to City Hall. There is a large display of the contributions of African-Americans to our country in there, and I encourage everybody to go. I didn't have time to read the whole thing, but it's something that we all need to go and see. So, if everybody gets a chance, please go to the library and visit and spend a little more time than I did in there.
Thank y'all very much. Y'all stick around for this. This performance is free. No cover, no minimum. The spiritual heirs are here, and this is, I don't know how many years they've been doing this, but if y'all will come forward, they're going to make you feel good. If they don't, there's something wrong with you. You know, there was a little boy that was here. Where? Good night alive, he didn't make it back. Do y'all want to introduce your group who was here? These guys have lived in the community, like Betty and Lisa and John, for years. I often say this, my senior year was the first year that they integrated the schools in Cobb County. And that was a pretty rough time. But you know what, we never, ever had a problem. And we got better in sports, too. But Rose Garden Hills, Davenport has always been a part of Smyrna. And we're glad that y'all are here, and glad y'all are going to, I'm glad you brought back the little guy, too. You want to introduce your group? Y'all hadn't changed a bit.
I'd like to first give an honor to God who's here all of our lives. We are the spiritual heirs, and all of us, right here from Smyrna. And a lot of people know the history of the spiritual lab. We were organized in 1957 in Rose Garden Hills, community in Davenport town. Organized when I was in the ninth grade of high school, myself. And I'm on this religion, rich in memory in it. But from then on, Brother Blunt been here. We have Deacon Blunt, William Blunt, Smyrna Church. My raised hand, brother Blunt. We have Deacon Kerry Bedford, Smyrna, Georgia. Brother Jerry Allen from Smyrna, Georgia. And myself, Alan Bedford, Smyrna, Georgia. And my great-great-nephew, Brother Peyton Bedford, Smyrna, Georgia. We ask y'all to give him all the hand, please. Smyrna, we are natives of Smyrna, grown and raised, right-hand Smyrna. Brother Peyton, come and give him a good song.
God is able.
God is able.
Just to carry you through. Makes no difference.
Makes no difference.
What the world.
What the world may do.
All you have to do is.
To Jesus.
Everything.
Everything you do.
God is able.
God is able.
Just to carry you through. God is able.
God is able.
Just to carry you through. Makes no difference.
Makes no difference.
What the world.
What the world may do.
All you have to do is.
Us to Jesus.
Everything.
Everything you do.
God is able.
God is able.
Just to carry you through. Trouble in my way.
Trouble in my way.
Have to cry sometimes.
Have to cry sometimes.
So much trouble.
Trouble in my way.
I have to cry sometimes.
Have to cry sometimes.
Late awake at night.
Late awake at night.
Late awake at night.
Late awake at night.
That's all right.
That's all right.
I know these.
Jesus, he will fix it.
Fix it in the morning.
Jesus, he will fix it.
Fix it in the evening.
Jesus, he will fix it.
Fix it in the midnight.
Jesus, he will fix it.
Anybody know the Lord?
Jesus, he will fix it.
Make it a way out of the way.
Jesus, he will fix it.
Anybody know the Lord?
Jesus, he will fix it.
Is a way maker.
Jesus, he will fix it.
After that.
After the war.
All the way.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
Yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
Oh, bye-bye, yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, yeah.
Bye-bye. Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way. All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
Uh-huh.
All the way.
This right here, where I once was lost and sin, but my Jesus me took on him, you know what it is? He shined a light from heaven on my soul. When he healed my heart and love, he rose up, made me a love. I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
I'm gonna. All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
I'm gonna.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
Uh-huh.
All the way.
This right here, where I once was lost and sin, but my Jesus me took on him, you know what it is? He shined a light from heaven on my soul. When he healed my heart and love, he rose up, made me a love. I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way. All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
All the way. All the way, yeah.
All the way.
All the way, yeah.
All the way.
I'm gonna.
Walk and talk with Jesus. All the way.
Uh-huh.
All the way.
I'm gonna walk.
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 Sometimes I can't see.
I'm gonna walk.
My way couldn't be.
I'm gonna walk.
But I made it.
I'm gonna walk.
I made it.
I'm gonna walk.
I got my hands.
I'm gonna walk.
And a lot of good hands.
I'm gonna walk.
Don't let nothing turn me around.
I'm gonna walk.
Don't let nothing turn me around.
I'm gonna walk.
I'm gonna walk.
Walk and talk with Jesus.
Yeah.
All the way.
Yeah.
All the way.
Thank y'all so much. We look forward to that every year. If you come back every meeting, they'll be able to make us act right up here, who knows? Under the mayor's report, the only other thing, Smyrna Fiber is coming. Hope everybody has heard about Google Fiber. That is big. We're one of nine cities that were selected. It's going to change a lot of things in Smyrna. It'll take about a year and a half for them to get everything by the time it's designed and all the fibers installed. But that's, I think that's going to change our community. I don't know nothing about it. I just know that it goes fast, and that's what people want, is to go fast. So, I made the announcement last Wednesday, I think. And, but I do want to thank Jennifer Bennett, Ken Sudruth, Eric Randall, Chris Addicks. Who else? A lot of people that worked on that. Eric Taylor, Tony Joe. I mean, our staff really was the, we just sort of sat back and did a sort of hands-off and let them do their thing. And I do appreciate all that they did. But for us to be one of nine cities, I think there's 18 in the southeast, in Charlotte, Nashville, and the Atlanta metro. So, for those folks that understand it, it's big. So, I don't understand it, but it makes people happy. All I know is we're already on the map, but it's going to even put us more on the map. Item four, land issues, only an annexation. Item A is a V14-043. It's a public hearing. Appeal the decision of the Licensing Variance Board to deny the variance request to allow a second full kitchen within a single-family townhouse. 0.06 acres, land lot 808, 5134 Afton Way. I guess this is Bridgette Su... How do you pronounce that? Suarez. Bridgette Suarez is she here? Is the applicant here? Might be a short hearing. Item four A is the applicant here. Mr. Cochran, do we go ahead and have the hearing? Or do we go ahead and act on it?
I think you could act on it if you wanted to.
I know there's some folks that are here that not necessarily in opposition to, but they're interested in this hearing. Am I correct? Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this item on the agenda? Don't be afraid to stand up or raise your hand or...
If you guys are gonna go forward with the hearing now, let's think about for a second how to do that. I think that the applicant would have to first present their case, and then, people who wanted to speak for or against that could go after the applicant.
This obviously does not happen very often where the applicant does not show up, so...
And if the applicant's not here to present the case, I don't think there's any reason to have anyone else speak. I think that if the applicant's not here and you sound for the applicant again, that, you know, it'd be proper to make a motion to dismiss the appeal for failure of the applicant to pursue it.
Okay.
If that's, I mean, I think that's the logical way to handle this.
You're the $800 an hour attorney.
Wish.
I'll turn this over to Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the fact that Ms. Suarez has not shown up this evening, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, and I'll tell you why I'm going to make a motion to uphold the denial.
Do we need to?
I think that's fine.
Can y'all hear me? In talking and looking at our policy and procedures and our, talking with our attorney, I am going to uphold the denial of this because if we allow the second kitchen with the stove, that would be two single-dwelling units in a single-family home, and that is not allowed. So, based on these findings, I'm going to make a motion that we uphold the denial.
And can I just add for clarification? Is also, is part of that motion based on the fact that the applicant hasn't pursued the denial at the hearing today?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Have a motion by Ms. Pritchett. Give her a second.
I'll...
Second, Mr. Welsh. Any other discussion?
I'll just say that even though the applicant is not here, were the applicant here, I think the opinions of the panel, or at least this panelist, would remain the same. And I concur that the neighborhood's restriction relative to the single-dwelling unit philosophy should be upheld.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved to deny 7-0. Item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. We have none. Seven, commercial building permits. We have none. Item X, consent agenda. Ms. Howard, will you please read the consent agenda? With the exception of G for council's approval.
Yes. Item A, 2015-34, is approval of mayor and council meeting minutes for January 20th, 2015. Item B, 2015-33, approval of contract with Cobb County Board of Elections and Registration to conduct Smyrna's November 3rd, 2015 election, and any runoff on December 1st, 2015, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute any associated documents. Item 2015-28, to award RFP 15-027 Reed Street Jarrinage Project to the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, Ardito Construction Company, for $114,825, and to authorize the mayor to execute any associated documents. Item 2015-44, approval for Atkins Park Tavern to extend event on restaurant premises for the Smyrna Oyster Fest, February 14th, 15th, and 17th of 2015. Item 2015-41, approval of 2015 St. Patrick's Day Celebration in the Market Village on March 14th and 17th of 2015. Item 2015-40, approval of Atkins Park Annual Crawfish Boil, April 25th to 26th, 2015. And then, item H, 2014-419, approval to use council chambers on Sunday, February 8th, 2015, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. for the Crete Wood et Finesse Annual HOA Meeting.
Your motion, we approve.
Move to approve, with the exception of item G, 2015-43, being held in the rest of council.
We also have a...
Can you, can we get a second? And then, we know that there's someone that had asked...
Item C.
Okay, you want to second it?
I seconded it.
Seconded it, it is. There's some question from someone, I'm not sure who, about item C.
When I was questioning...
Item C.
About item C.
About item C.
Yeah. Mr. Howser, I believe he might be in the audience. I think he has not necessarily opposed to item C, but just has some questions about item C. And I'm not sure if we need to remove that from consent.
It's not a public hearing issue.
No, it's not a public hearing issue. That's why I'm having some technical confusion.
Well, you've got a motion in the second, so you've got to act on that. You can, what I suggest is maybe afterwards, maybe talk to Mr. Howser about it, you know, kind of informally, but you got to, you just have to act on the motion that's on the table.
Okay. Your motion, we got a motion second to approve this with the exception of item G.
Can I just clarify one thing? On that E, is that correct? Where it's two separate dates, the 14th and the 17th?
I'm just assuming the 14th is probably Saturday. I don't know.
Okay.
Just because I saw it on the sign, and I wondered why those dates were on it.
Okay. Oh, okay.
I've got a motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Need two more votes. It's approved seven zero. Committee reports will start tonight with Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sudruth, on this motion that upheld the License and Variance Board, will someone from your department contact them? Do that? Okay, thank you. I too am saddened by the loss of Chief Brown and keep his family in our prayers, and we just, we're going to really miss him. The other thing I wanted to announce is on March the 24th, I believe it is, or maybe the 22nd, which is a Tuesday, we are going to have a public meeting that will be held here in the council chambers from 7:00 to 8:00 regarding our vision implementation plan. And that's the 24th of March, it's on a Tuesday, from 7:00 in the council chambers right here. And anyone who is interested in working with us, working with the city, this is a vision plan that will go for 10 years. We had surveys, online surveys, we had one-on-one conversations, we had work groups, we met at the Jonquill Fest and talked to people. I think we got about 1,650 responses and people who applied, and then when we had our meetings, we had about 28 people that were involved in that. So we're putting it out to the public because this is a process that started from the public up. This has been public. Our constituents and our business owners in the city have worked on this and brought this forward. So you're invited on the 24th to come if you want to be, if you think you want to be involved. We have five different work groups, or if you just want to hear about it. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just stunned, I really am. When we got the word this afternoon that Deputy Chief Brown had passed away, it was like surreal. For those of you who knew him, you know what an honorable and really fun person he was, and how much he loved working for the city, and even with his health problems, he never let it get him down. We just, luckily, we just saw him two weeks ago, and, you know, he was just as jovial as ever. When someone so vibrant and full of life and loving life passes that quickly, it really makes you stand back and think about your own experiences. So I hope that his, his family finds peace. And with that, I yield, Your Honor.
Ms. Terry Nullwich.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to thank the spiritual heirs for being with us tonight. It is always a treat when they join us to help commemorate and celebrate Black History Month, but it was especially a comfort tonight because we are all reeling from the loss of Deputy Chief Mike Brown. When I came and joined the city seven years ago, he was always patient with my questions. He was always thoughtful. He was a kind, gracious, generous person, and it is a tremendous loss to this community that we're dealing with today. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be very difficult for, for all of us here, and especially for all of his colleagues in the police department, and I'm thinking of them all, and I hope that you'll all think of them and keep them in your thoughts and in your prayers. I want to take a moment again to commend staff for Google Fiber. The mayor named all the people on staff who just did a great job. I think one of the most important untold stories of Google Fiber and what it means for all nine cities that are going to be receiving it in metro Atlanta is how well all of the staff of these cities worked together to cooperate and to collaborate and to make this truly revolutionary technology come to our communities. I mean, you had Sandy Springs working with Atlanta, you had, I mean, it was just amazing how, how these, how the cities work together. It's not a story that you hear much in metro Atlanta. Usually the story we hear is how we can't work together and how the elected officials can't work together, and it's remarkable how well these communities work together, and that is something that I think really needs to be remarked upon and recognized. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd do like to offer my condolences to the, to the Brown family. I guess what I remember most, we were, we were kidding with him two weeks ago and hearing about the robot that the police department just brought, and, but, but he was someone that never, never acknowledged that he had any, any health issues at all, just had a great attitude on life. But I want to talk a little bit about the, the Google Fiber issue as well. As the president of an engineering company here in Smyrna, it, it is a big deal. I would love to have it as our company. Unfortunately, I'm adjacent to the city of Smyrna. And, and we're, we're outside the city, but I'm sure Ron would like for me to take care of that. But it is, it is great news from a personal standpoint to be, to be in the city and just to be able to connect and have the speed that they're going to offer to the citizens and to the businesses and to our industry here in town. It will, will be a welcome service. With that, Mr. Mayor, you.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of things. I want to share my sentiments about Mike Brown. We're going to miss him, and it was very sad today, but I also know the citizens are going to miss him. I've had a couple of citizens already express their condolences to me today, and so they're going to, he's going to be very missed by the citizens as well. I'd also like to make some announcements about things at the library. Councilman Welch mentioned this a little bit earlier, but there is a, a display or a traveling show at the library. It's the Tuskegee Airmen Show, and the exhibit explores the history and the heroism of the first African-American pilots to fly in combat during World War II. So that exhibit is at the library, and it's worth going to see. There's also, this past Sunday, I want to comment on the first lecture series that's sponsored by the Friends of the Library. They had a presentation about Ms. Nellie May Rowe. She was an artist that lived in Vinings, and she is a very creative and resourceful self-taught artist. She gained national recognition during the last decade of her life, and long before that, she was well-known locally in Vinings by visitors who came to her exuberantly embellished home, which contained her drawings, stuffed dolls, and recycled objects. And her works now are on display at the High Museum of Art and the Smithsonian, and there's other public and private collections. And, and, and that, that presentation on Sunday, there were several citizens and family members of Nellie May Rowe that came and shared their stories about her and also some of her original works that people have purchased and hung on to, which their stories were of how they acquired those pieces were very interesting as well, and now they're worth quite a bit of money. So anyway, that was very interesting, and there's books there that also tell, at the library, that will tell you all about Nellie May Rowe. And also, I want to announce there is a coloring contest at the library, and you can find the registration at the youth services desk, and the winner of the coloring contest will receive, let's see, one of three airplane gliders. So I encourage all the children to go and check that out as well. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Weylenico.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've had the pleasure in the last few weeks of speaking and hosting the annual meetings for the Heritage at Vinings HOA and Devonshire Court HOA. It was always a pleasure to be in front of those groups of constituents and hear their concerns or questions and update them on what's going on in the city. This coming Sunday, I'll get to do that with another Ward 6 neighborhood, Creewood at Vinings, and I look forward to seeing them again, as I do every year, hosting them here at City Hall. I too want to mention the, the first Sunday lecture series at the Smyrna Library. I attended the lecture yesterday on Nellie May Rowe. She did live in Vinings. I drove by her house every day since I started driving at 16. She was well-known in the community, and, you know, as I've gotten more mature and learned more about her, I've come to appreciate more and more of the gifts and talents that she had. And the stories about her, especially from family members and close friends, that, you know, almost came up like testimonials. They weren't part of the formal lecture, but it was fascinating, including one of my best friends that I grew up with. I didn't know this until he got up to speak, but he wrote the language for a marker that was placed on the site in remembrance of her, on the site of her home, which is now the Courtyard Marriott in Vinings is where she lived. He wrote the language for the marker, and he's one of my best friends growing up. I never knew he did that. So, I mean, it was great to see him and other people that I knew. You know, we celebrate Black History Month in February, but, you know, I'm always struck by the fact that, you know, whether it's black history or whatever history, it's really the history of us. There is no American history without black history. There is no black history without the history of all the other groups and peoples that have come to America. We're not united by tribe, or race, or ethnic background, or religion. We're united uniquely in the world by thoughts and ideals, by ideas. That's what unites the divergent and diverse people that call America and the United States home, is the ideals and way of life that we share, the values that we cherish, the freedom that we love and strive to maintain. There is no better place to live in the United States, or in the world than the United States. I truly believe that, and, and we are very blessed to have been born here or to have come here and, and to be here tonight. Finally, I also want to recognize the loss of Deputy Chief Mike Brown. I've worked with him since I was first sworn in in January of 1988. In those, those years, almost the first 10 years of my service, the police department was in turmoil. We ended up changing police chiefs. There were a number of lawsuits between officers in the department and the city, and the morale was down, and there were just a lot of awful times. And I've got to tell all the people of Smyrna, it was Mike Brown who was the glue that kept that department together. He came to work every day with a smile. He loved the city of Smyrna. He worked hard to treat everybody fairly and equally. He looked out for the safety and welfare of the officers, the men and women of the department, civilian and sworn alike. He was just a very, very, and you've heard this from others, a positive person to be around, despite all the personal medical issues and family issues, and, you know, everybody has issues in their family and in their life, but you never heard about it from Mike because he was always so positive and, you know, just so grateful and so happy to have the chance to serve. He was about service. And last year, I was able to coach the Campbell High School Boys Lacrosse Team, and this season, I'm again coaching them, and we remembered him at practice today. And after I told the boys about him, they, on their own, elected to have a moment of We will miss Chief Brown. I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to share the excitement about the arrival of Google, Google Fiber to our community and what it means and will mean for our future. As more young people move into our community, as more businesses move here, as more businesses and young people want to move here and work here, Google Fiber and other fiber options are going to present to us the ability to step into whole new avenues of pursuit, and it is a big deal. If you haven't looked it up, just go Google, Google Fiber, and see what it shares with you. As the mayor pointed out, it'll be probably a year and a half before we have the infrastructure built out to accommodate most. But one advantage for living in the city of Smyrna, this is going to be technically a franchise agreement, as I understand it, so you, you must be a resident of the city of Smyrna in order to have an option of tying in. Of course, it's based upon where their fiber is running at that time, whether or not you're going to be able to tap in, but it's a big deal, and we're excited to have this new partnership and what it's going to mean for us business-wise and for families as well. It's been just over three years since the mayor gave me the privilege of chairing the Public Safety Committee, working with police, fire, 911, and emergency management for this city. And throughout all of that, there has been a consistent individual. We've had some people come and go, but it was in the dead of winter in 1976 when a 23-year-old young man came here, raised his hand and swore his allegiance to do his duty as a police officer in the city of Smyrna. Unwavering, and as Mr. Lenica pointed out, through some challenging times, he was a consistent force, a quiet, determined leader that others followed. He wanted no credit for himself. It was a couple of years ago before I actually learned of his musical talent. I just walked in on a performance that he and some of his bandmates were, were out there just sharing their, their musical talent and having a great time. This man was rock solid all the way around. He stood in when we didn't have a chief. He stood in whenever there were complaints. He stood in. And he stands today as an exemplar of what a city employee and a police officer ought to be known as, and I am extremely humbled and proud to have known him for this short period of time, but I thank him for his 30, next week would be 39 years. Next week would have been 39 years of service to the city of Smyrna. He was on duty when he passed, something he loved more than almost anything, is the way I read it. And I'm just proud to have known him, and I wish you would join me in thanking all the other public safety personnel when you encounter them and thank them for what they do to stand 24/7, 365, in defense of our homes, our families, and our businesses. And I'm going to miss Mike Brown, and the city of Smyrna is going to miss Mike Brown. I wish all the best for his family, and our prayers are with all of them. And, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Tony Joe Howard. Scott Cochran.
I just want to kind of echo what some guys have said about Mike Brown. You know, he, I don't know that there was a better police officer anywhere than Mike Brown. I first met Mike over 20 years ago on the other side of a case. He was on one side of a case, making a case out against some people, and I was on the other side, and we became friends, and I saw him as a problem solver and a smart, smart guy, and just a real practical guy in all regards. And, you know, I wish his, his wife comfort during this time. I know it's tough, you know, but I didn't want it to go around without me just giving my condolences to the family and just letting everybody know what, just a fantastic guy that Mike Brown was.
Ms. Terry Graham, D.C. Show call's hearing. We do not have anything. I got one person signed up for, citizen input, Jane Hauser of 1020, Karen Court. Her topic is comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. Max has something before I get to what I brought, is back when you were a senior, a senior in high school and they, they integrated schools, they integrated Argyle Elementary, and my mother received a telephone call from Jasper Griffin, the then-school superintendent. And she got off the phone, and my dad asked her, said, "What'd they want, Clyde?" And he, she said, "Well, they're going to integrate the, the school. There's one boy coming in second grade," and he asked me if I would teach him. And he said, "Well, what'd you say?" She said, "Of course. A child is a child." And she believed that. She was an outstanding teacher. My name is Jane Hauser, and I know that for the last eight years, you've heard from my husband Doug. I'm here tonight to let you see the results of our settlement with you. I'm here to, I, I want to show you the pictures of the before and after of our backyard. In the before picture, you will see the rain runoff. You'll see the, you will not see the deep trench that was in our yard or the remains of it. or the remains of the fence that was knocked down by fast-moving water. You also have the after picture showing our new backyard with the new storm drain. Our yard, and it has rained for the last few days. Our yard no longer has a deep trench in it, and we have no standing water at all. Thank you. The Miller Davis Construction Company did an outstanding job fixing it. I have only one other thing to get off my mind. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I've lived in Smyrna since 1959. You and I have been members of Smyrna First Unit of Methodist since we were children. In May, my granddaughter will be the third generation to graduate from Campbell High School. My uncle is on the wall of the Veterans Memorial in Smyrna as the first Cobb Countyman to die in World War I. I taught in Smyrna area schools for 31 years. That said, I was deeply offended to see, to see on the front page of the Meredith Daily Journal that a councilperson was quoted as saying that Doug and I were looking for a Christmas bonus. I've never sought to ask what I was not due, especially the city in which I spent most of my life. Though I do feel that we are owed an apology, I'm not asking for one now or ever. I have just stated my feelings, and now we will move on. Thank you for listening.
You got 10 seconds. Extra. You did good.
And I have nothing else to say. We are so happy with the results.
Thank you. Now, your time's up. If there's no other business to be brought for this body, just so folks will know, I have ordered that the flags be flown at half-staff for the next three days for Deputy Chief Mike Brown. I'd like to create this meeting adjourned at 8:23.